We shall call this meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Stacy, I'll ask for roll call, please.
Councilmember Gulletson?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Krails? Mayor Waller?
Yes. All right, next before us is our approval of tonight's agenda. We have at least one item to add. Under petitions, requests, and communications, I'd like you to add Brad Dawlin to the park board. It's a request, put Brad Dawlin onto the park board. And then we also have an additional speaker in Mary Elizabeth Bazanson that's going to be up after Jessica Kerwin. So it'll be an item B under citizens' comments. And are there any other additions or corrections from members of the council? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve tonight's agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And once again, I'd like to start this meeting off with Mayor Waller's quote for the day. This particular quote comes from our 35th president, John F. Kennedy Jr., John F. Kennedy rather, I'm sorry. He was, uh... He served from 1961 until his assassination in 1963. He was the first Roman Catholic and youngest person elected to president at 43 years old. His quote goes something like this. "As we express our gratitude, we must never forget that the highest appreciation is not to utter words, but to live by them." Felt that was appropriate on the heels of 4th of July and celebrating our history of our great country. Okay, we have citizens' comments and first, uh, is first person up is Jessica Kerwin. She's going to give us an HRA update. Welcome, Jessica.
Thank you. I'm just here kind of to do an update on the development that we're working on. Just to kind of let you know some information and then have a request at the end. Morris currently has 227 units of income restricted housing and will be losing 118 units in the next couple of years and could potentially lose all but 60 by 2036. The HRA is applying for housing tax credits with Minnesota Housing to develop affordable housing. This is the same funding that was used to develop Wildwood Apartments and Crystal Lake Town Homes, which were constructed in the mid-'90s. And the 30-year compliance period for those two developments is ending. The, our proposal would include a 50-year restriction for the new development. And assuming award and financing, we would begin construction of a 48-unit apartment building with one to four-bedroom units for families with low to moderate income levels. It would be both income and rent restricted. And we are proposing a rental subsidy for 30 units and 18 units would be available to moderate-income families with, this is pretty, it moves annually, but around between $58,000 and $109,000 depending on family size. And the proposal is subject to change depending on the approval of funding and the actual cost of development by the time we get to that point. The project would contribute to the implementation of the 2017 Stevens County Comprehensive Plan, which specifically identifies a longstanding concern regarding affordable housing and rentals, particularly in the city of Morris. And in the 1999 City of Morris Comprehensive Plan, the housing goal number two identifies affordable and accessible housing options as a need and priority in the community, especially for students and elderly housing. While that information is probably a bit dated, the proposed development is not intended to serve students or be restricted to seniors, but it is planned to include an elevator and universal design for accessibility in all of the units. And as the HRA moves forward with the funding application, I'm requesting support from the city of Morris by certifying that the project does contribute to the active implementation of your comprehensive plan, which is, addresses the needs and priorities identified by the community, and also a commitment to help with the cost of trees to incorporate into a landscape plan and waiving of the connection fee for city utilities.
Any questions of Jessica?
You said we're going to lose like 147 units in the next year?
Couple of years.
Couple of years? And that's why?
Because there's a property with 80 units of restricted housing that will be opting out and so they will convert to something called, like, flexible vouchers to move around. But then also, there's Wildwood's apartments and I'm assuming also Crystal Lake Town Homes will no longer have income restrictions after the 30-year compliance period. And the same thing will be happening with a number of rural development or could be happening with a number of rural development properties in the area. For example, there's one in Hancock that's already exited that compliance period. And there's several others that, depending on what the owners elect to do, whether they apply for funding and sign up for an extension of the restriction, that's kind of what will happen here.
So they're basically just, when they build them, there's a 30-year?
30 to 50 years depending on the program and the funding source.
Whose option is that at that 30-year? Is that the property owner? Is that HRA? Or is it the state?
That's the property owner. 30 years is the, when you do a low-income housing tax credit development, the minimum restriction in the state of Minnesota, who you go through the credits for, is 30 years. And then for what we're proposing, we're, you can score higher or be more competitive if you extend that for a longer period and that's our, the reason that we're looking at 50. And for all rural development properties, it is 50 years.
Thank you.
That appears that you're going to be filling a need that, so that's a good thing. Any other questions for Jessica before she?
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in. Mary Elizabeth, you are up.
My name's Dr. Bazanson and I have raised with the council the issue of providing addresses before one is allowed to speak. And given the tragic events of last month, I think that that issue has become even more critical. I read in the newspaper, because you discussed this issue after I had, you know, left, because it was the next month, that Mr. Miller is concerned about whether we know a person resides in Morris. I don't understand that concern, but I do honor it. So I suggest that you allow people to provide their zip code because you know from my zip code where I live or that I live in the city. So 56267 is my zip code. May I continue?
Sure.
Okay. I felt piqued on the day that you went on the tour of the parks, but I happened to notice you all gathered around the picnic shell. And I was sorry that you didn't come and look at the band shelf. And I happened to encounter Russ the next morning when he was getting out of his truck. He was surprised to see me. So we talked about the fact that there is a board over a window that has not been painted for two or three years. My greatest concern about the safety in the band shelf is that there is a door that opens onto the stage. A child was injured in that door last year. I asked Russ about taking it off because in the wind it blows and children do dance on the stage. And he told me that the lock was broken and couldn't be fixed because people kept vandalizing it. So I suggested we just take the door off and then put it back on in the winter because he said he needed the door because of the snow getting on the band shelf floor. And this will tell you that I didn't feel well because I thought, oh, okay. Are you kidding? The entire front of the band shelf is open. The wind piles snow in there with or without that door. So I think we should take the door off. The other thing is that Russ took me in the men's bathroom, which is always kind of fun because the drinking fountain can't be fixed because he'd have to rip up the floor because something's cut. But what I noticed is under the sinks in the men's bathroom are four-inch holes, which I don't think will stop the vandal. But the most probably awful thing is the broken window on the side of the band shelf with the bathrooms. The window's been broken. There is a piece of wood protecting it. And Russ did measure it. It's a month later. Nothing has covered that. There are glass teeth around the entire window that could be reached by a child. That's extraordinarily dangerous in my view. So I just wanted to bring those concerns to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in. All right. Would there be anybody else that would like to approach the council before we move on? Hearing done, we shall move on. We have no public hearings tonight. We shall move to our reading and approval of our regular meeting minutes from June 24th, 2025.
I'll move approval of the regular meeting minutes on June 24th.
I will second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve June 24th, 2025, regular meeting minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And then we have the same version of the condensed minutes from June 24th, 2025.
I'll move approval of the condensed version of the minutes.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the condensed version of the minutes from June 24th, 2025, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next up is our consented agenda, which tonight consists of the audit of city bills, gambling reports, item C, City of Morris Tree Board Meeting Minutes from April 16th, 2025, our transit report, our application to conduct off-site gambling for the Morris Hockey Association, and item F, application for temporary on-sale liquor license for the American Legion at the Stevens County Fair. Wow, fair, fair request already. And I shall move approval of the items on the consent agenda.
I will second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. I will bring it back to city council for any items that they would like to discuss on the consent agenda.
I just have a question. When I, every now and then I see locate fees for Gopher State. Is that projects we're doing that we pay that fee or what is? It doesn't happen, I mean, I see it on occasion. It would be line item 19.
I believe that's for all the locates that happen.
So any locate in the city of Morris, the city pays for? I don't think I ever knew that.
Somebody wants to dig on their own property?
I believe so.
Or does it have to do, has to do with city water sewer, any of that kind of stuff?
Yeah, it's citywide and then the guys mark the water sewer, our sewer.
So this is, so if I call Gopher State to come and mark, they charge, if I call them five times in a year, they'll, they charge, the city pays for that?
Oh.
I had no idea.
Part of that would be picked up, I would guess, by our building permit. So if somebody's locating for something on their property, correct?
Depends if they're just planting a tree.
No, because it's, it could be for anything, anything that they dig. They could dig in a fence post. Trees, yeah. They're supposed to call in for tree spenses, anything besides even just buildings.
Is that normal?
That's, every city pays that for all the locates, yeah.
How much is that amount to? Doesn't appear to be a lot, does it? Do we get a lot of locates?
I'd have to look and see. Off the top of my head, I can't tell you how much a year we pay. It's not a ton per locate.
Right, right.
But I can look, I can look that up for you.
It's not that important. It's, I just.
Well, it's just, it's interesting because like I said, I've seen it on here, but never like, what is this for? Is this city? And I thought, well, this is more than the city locating it for city property.
Well, I guess we want to try to incentivize people to, to do a locate because it's, it kind of helps prevent an accident. So if paying for it helps in that regard, I think it's probably money well spent, but it'd be nice to just kind of have a ballpark area where we're spending. I don't really have a question, but I just see in line item 38 and 41, I thought it was rather timely because we're going to be having a TIF conversation later on tonight. That was two TIF payments that came through. One was for Timmerman Properties and the other one was for PW Properties. So it's, I guess, kind of relevant to what we're going to be talking about later. See TIF in action, so to speak. The one amount was for PW was $22,691 and Timmerman Properties was $9,682.62. So if I understand that correctly, those payments, that money goes back into that, that TIF district for development costs to defer to.
Yep.
So it's kind of nice to see that that actually is a good example, I guess, for what we're going to be talking about later.
PW Properties would be legacy? And out of curiosity, what's left on those TIF amounts or what, how many years are left remaining on those just?
I checked on that actually. I called Deanna Hoyer and she said that on the Timmerman Properties, it will be decertified March 19th of 2045. So that has 20 years left. And PW Properties of Morris will be decertified December 31st, 2041. So that has 16 years left.
Thank you.
I was interested too, so that's why I thought I better ask. If you ever have a TIF question, Deanna Hoyer, she's the one to talk, talk to. She's the TIF expert up at the courthouse. Any other questions or issues, one of, or I guess, questions, I guess, regarding the consent agenda? Otherwise, we can, we already have a motion and a second, so. Hearing none. I guess I'll just ask for a voice vote approval on the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, petitions and requests and communications. And we have the item that we added, item A. Going to add Brad Dawlin to the park board. And I think if you'll recall, Brad was one of the individuals that was involved with the gen two. So it's kind of nice to see that Brad's stepping up and going to get involved in the park board. I think it'd be, he'd be a good addition.
I will move to appoint Brad Dawlin to the park board.
I will second. And he will be replacing Alyssa Strie, I believe?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Well, we have a motion and a second to add Brad Dawlin to the park board. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next before us, under ordinances, resolutions. The first resolution is a resol, resolution governing write-in voting county. Becca, would you like to speak to that one?
Yeah, so this just allows us to not write, record every single write-in that comes in unless it's, write-ins, the total number of write-ins for offices equal to or greater than the fewest number of non-write-in votes for the same office. So unless that happens, all the write-ins won't be tallied up individually because otherwise you have to go in and put on a tally sheet who it was, how many votes they got. So sometimes you get some strange ones like Big Bird on there so we don't have to write out all of the write-ins. It's just makes counting go a little faster at election time.
So no Fred Flintones or any of those types of guys?
Those, those will still be counted as write-in votes, but you don't individually have to list them out. So otherwise you'd have to list them out individually.
It's just got to meet a certain threshold in order to do it, right?
Right, to where their name would appear, like when you canvas, it'll say write-ins and then the number instead of each individual write-in name.
So they're still being tallied? They're just not separated as far as if there's 15 different people?
Correct. They're still, they're still tallied, yeah. They're still tallied. You just don't write, like, on the sheet when you canvas. It would instead, it would just say write-in instead of, Ben Dreyer got five and this person got seven, you know? Big Bird got one.
It seems reasonable enough to me.
Yeah.
I don't think anybody's going to, you know, how many write-ins do we get typically? I mean, it varies from election to election, but. You do have a question?
Do you have to, do you have to, you have to tally though the write-ins though? What if somebody were to get like 45 or be, okay.
It would have, they would have to, in order to do that, they'd have to.
Is still counted? It's just not?
Everything is still counted.
It's just not?
Okay.
And somewhere it's showing if somebody had, obviously.
Say if they got 500 and the lowest person that is on the ballot got 400, then the write-ins would.
Okay.
Then you'd have to count the write-ins.
Count or show?
Show them, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's what I'm getting upset when you say count. It's like, well, aren't we counting write-in votes? So, so showing them?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. That makes sense.
Individually recorded, I think, is what we're looking for. It'll be counted, but they won't be recorded individually until they meet a greater number than the, at least amount that a person on the ballot would receive.
Yes.
Very good. Did that answer your question and that? Okay, thank you. All right. I guess I can move on that resolution governing write-in voting county.
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion and a second and I guess Stacy, I'll ask for a roll call vote on that resolution, please.
Councilmember Krails, Salvi?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Gulletson?
Yes.
Mayor Waller?
Yes. Resolution before us, approving a five-year contract for assessing services for 2026 through 2030. And once again, Becca, if you want to just speak to that one?
Yeah, so the city has used the county assessor's office for assessing properties in Morris for over 10 years. Hiring an assessor is a lengthy process as they need to complete coursework and work for a city or county under a licensed assessor for quite a bit of time. With shortages of assessors in Minnesota, many cities have partnered with the counties in order to get, get in share assessing costs. So we had the assessor at the Board of Equalization meeting, seemed pretty happy with how they are working. I haven't had any complaints about their work, so looking at another five-year contract with a yearly increase of 3% each year.
And I think as long as I've been on city council, we've used their services and over the years, I don't recall. Gosh, I have a hard time even thinking of maybe one or two times when we got even anybody questioned anything. So I think it's gone really well. So if we're happy and the public's happy, it certainly makes sense. Any other discussion on that resolution?
Is this 3% yearly increase, is that what we did in our last contract with them?
Yep.
Is there a reason for 3%?
3%'s been standard with contracts. We've noticed that with the other contracts that we have for economic development or, um, all of those ones. It seems like 3% has just been a standard.
It's about $1,000 a year roughly. You know, eight, between $800 and $1,000 a year, that 3%, that's what it kind of looks like. That seems reasonable enough to me. I don't know. $1,000 isn't do much anymore.
Do we have a motion on this yet, Mayor?
No.
I will move that we approve a five-year contract for assessing services for 2026 through 2030, Stevens County.
I will second that.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the resolution approving a five-year contract for assessing services for 2026, 20 through 2030. Once again, we'll have roll call vote on that, please.
Councilmember Salvi?
Yes.
Krails? Gulletson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Waller?
Yes. All right, next resolution we have is approving a grant contract with the state of Minnesota. And once again, Becca, if you want to speak to that?
Yeah, so I had applied for an Explore Minnesota Tourism Grant to help with the Pre-Harvest Fest advertising dollars. We were awarded a $2,000 grant with a $2,000 matching, which we have already offered to help them cover outside area tourism advertising. So that would be our $2,000 match. So the contract just kind of states out the grant agreement and stipulations with it. So I would ask for approval of the grant contract.
I will move approval of the resolution approving the grant contract with the state of Minnesota in the amount of $2,000.
I will second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the grant contract with the state of Minnesota. Once again, Stacy, we'll have a roll call vote on that, please.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Gulletson?
Yes.
Krails? Salvi?
Yes.
Mayor Waller?
Yes. Okay, we have, uh, our last resolution is item D, a resolution calling public hearing on the proposed modification of the Morris Economic Development Project. It's the adoption of a modification to the redevelopment plan for the Morris Economic Development Project, the proposed establishment of a tax increment financing district number 17 within the Morris Economic Development Project, and the proposed adoption of tax increment financing plan relating there too. So, once again, Becca, I'll ask you to maybe speak to that one.
Yeah, so we met in our work session for a TIF district for parcels 20-0055-032 and 20-0055-033. So that area is what people would say the old school was on. Two of the parcels over there. The next step in the process for this, for, to create this TIF district would be to have a public hearing and call for a public hearing. So this resolution calls for the public hearing on August 12th.
Yeah, and that's at our regular meeting that night.
Yep. Yep.
Alright. That's the date of the hearing too, isn't it? During the, we have a hearing in the morning?
No, that's on the sixth.
On the sixth, that's right. Okay.
Oh.
That's right, hearing.
I'll move on that resolution calling a public hearing on the proposed modification plan, um, for till August twelfth. During our regular meeting.
Do we need to set a time?
Five fifteen is what it says in the resolution, approximately five fifteen, yep.
Okay.
Does that need to be included in the resolution?
It's in there, yeah.
Yeah, it's all in there.
Okay. I will second that.
Thank you. Was there any other discussion before we put it to vote? Okay. Uh, once again, we, uh, we'll just ask for a roll call vote on that resolution, please, Stacy.
Councilmember Gullison.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Salvi.
Yes.
Crails, Mayor Waller.
Yes. Alright, we have, uh, our city manager's newsletter. Take it away, Becca.
Yeah, so, um, it's a summer of projects. We're working on a lot of different projects, working with the engineer to discuss a few things uh, for this year and next year. Seventh Street, we had our pre-con meeting, um, in that we will send out notices to affected homeowners, uh, by the end of this week. Um, they thought about starting middle of July to end of July, uh, with the rain, it looks like it's more end of July. Um, so we'll get those letters out with the map that kinda shows, uh, how it's gonna be phased and, and where, where it's starting and ending. Uh, the MinDOT sidewalk project, that's set up for next year, so plans are still being drawn up. Um, we're gonna have a first chance to look at those in the next couple of weeks. Um, Moore is working on those, plus they're working on the design for the trail project. Uh, they will be sending out some survey crews to look at Albany Ave and Sunset, uh, Place reconstruction areas. Um, that was our thought for, uh, next year's project, although with the apartment, uh, building maybe going in, they're also looking and going to be surveying Fourth, Fifth, um, and Sixth East Street. Um, Columbia to College Ave for, uh, reconstruction area also. So hoping to do one of those projects next year. And we've identified six other projects besides those, um, so with Moore, when we, uh, first talked to them and things we liked about them, they have this really nice CIP tool, so they're gonna start doing some draft maps and putting some of our items into the CIP tool, so we can kinda look at costs and how these projects are going to look, um, going forward and how we can start playing with, with some of these projects. Uh, Moore will be working with Ryan and Adam to put our information into their GIS tool and then kinda show us how to use it. Uh, the Wells Park bathroom is getting quoted. We're hoping to get those back, um, in the next couple of weeks. Russ has, uh, been out this last few days, so I don't think he'll be at the park board meeting tomorrow, but, um, hopefully I'll get some information before that meeting and we can kinda update them on where we're at. Uh, the building inspector has the plans, so they're going through those to get us our, um, building permit for that project. Um, Hillside doesn't have a start date as of right now. They're doing that reconstruct on there, the Mill and O'Leary Reconstruct Full Depth Mill. Um, there has been some confusion on it. It is one of our capital improvement projects, so there is no cost to homeowners. So if you, um, have some questions from them, it is not an assessed project, it's just part of our, um, projects that we're, that we're doing. Um, and then the railroad on Seventh Street is finished and was opened back up last week. Um, Chrissy Lake Dam, uh, the engineers were hoping to be here at this meeting. Um, they are still finalizing some things before they present to the council and the county again, so they're either hoping the twenty-second or the twelfth that they'll be back here at council. Uh, working on budget items, at the next meeting I'll present the budget guidelines for twenty twenty-six. Um, final rules were adopted for the Minnesota paid leave. So with that, we're able to look at private companies versus the state of Minnesota's plan, just as long as it is what the state offers or better. Um, a lot of cities have been looking into and are going with private plans, just 'cause they say they will probably be more, um, quick to respond to, to employees, so we have reached out to our insurance agent. He's looking at private companies to see if this is more cost-effective for the city and employees. And then we'll be meeting.
I'm, I'm sorry, and that one, that's with the family leave?
Yeah.
So, then you would be opting out of paying that money to the state and take it to a s- you, uh, you, you still have to pay it?
Yes.
You just wouldn't take it to the state and take it to a private firm?
You do a private one, that does paid family medical leave, yep. Instead of the state's paid family medical leave, so kinda like, like a long-term disability type of thing. Those types of places already do a paid family leave option. So instead of going with the state's paid family leave option, if we could get a private company, they could possibly be cheaper. Um, and with our contracts written, it's fifty, fifty-fifty, so employee pays fifty, city pays fifty, so if we can find something that is equivalent to the state's policy at a cheaper rate, um, that would be more beneficial to all parties.
What do you mean fifty-fifty? What's, what's?
So the, the premium that we have to pay into the state, I think it's a point seven-seven?
Well, isn't that mandated by, isn't that what the state has mandated too, that the employer pays half and the employer pays half?
Nope, they, nope, it's a... You can kinda figure, you can kinda work, work it out on who pays what. In our contract negotiations, we said we'd pay half and they'd pay half.
Well, what does the state mandate?
It, from what I understand, they mandate that it's paid. They don't care who pays it, if it's the employee or the, or the city.
Oh, I th- I thought that, I thought through the state there was at least partially the employee and partially the employee. Employer and employee, so I, I guess I was, I maybe I misread it or something.
There's no way we're fifty-fifty.
So that would be like an insurance premium. If we pay it to a private company, whatever's there, what if it comes up short or long? Who do we have to pay more then? If it's with a private company, I guess I'm just confused there, if you have more use than you anticipate and the funds are, are not there to cover?
I think it's like an insurance.
So they would?
So the insurance company would cover it.
Are they?
So the state was gonna operate its own?
They still are.
They still are, but now they're saying that you can opt out and use your own instead of using the state's?
Correct, as long as it is.
Is comparable to what they would offer.
Meet their standards.
That's the way to be.
So that they have to follow all the, um, the guidelines to acceptance of people's claims, just like we're comp, all that, so that will there be any? Will the privates be more lenient than the state or more restrictive than the state? Will there be? I, I could almost see an issue that if they're, if the privates are denying the claim more than maybe the state, well, it, it could be an issue. I don't know, I just, because it, just because you apply for it, doesn't mean you're going to get it.
Correct.
Right, you have to meet standards and, and things like that, so.
Yeah, you would think, whether it's public or private, they have to meet the same qualifications, is would be my take on it. Just who wants to do what for less or more?
Well, who doesn't wanna do it?
Well, I.
Would be the publics.
By, by, by norm definition, the, the private will be tighter than the public. The public will give more than the pri- 'cause the private's gonna keep more money. The public end is just, if they run out of money, they're just gonna up the rate. This is, I just was interested in, I didn't know that that would go to a private situation.
It, yeah, new rules came out. It's, yeah, so.
You're either figuring that they just have a really hard time staffing, or it's gonna be a lot bigger project than they ever dreamed it was going to be. Yeah.
Yeah, I think you're, I think you're spot on with that assessment, Brian.
What's that?
I think you're spot on with that assessment.
Well, great, yeah. That's more options, that's better.
Yeah, gives us some options. Um, the group of us, Brian, Jeff and I, will be meeting with the county to discuss the contract for services provided for the sheriff's office. Um, hopefully by the end of this month and start more of those conversations. And then some upcoming events, if anyone would like to go to anything, so the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities is hosting a legislative recap in Wilmere on August seventh, from five to seven. Um, it's a free event. Um, I've already signed up, so if anyone wants to come, uh, they sure can, um, and I can sign you up, or you can sign up, um. And then otherwise, I will just bring a recap, uh, to the council meeting. And then the Coalition is also having their summer conference in Bemidji, July twenty-third through the twenty-fifth, so if anyone is interested in going, uh, again, please let me know and I can sign you up for that. And then, uh, last meeting, or the next meeting, the next meeting is July twenty-second. Um, my son does leave for basic training that day. I have to bring him up to Fargo, um, not quite certain when. Uh, he will get his marching orders either on the seventeenth or eighteenth, so I will let you know then, um, if I will be back in time for council or not. Um, but just so you have, um, an idea, I may not be here, but I will, um, definitely leave, um, a report for you. And then, I don't, I don't have anything else on here, but, um, if we wanted to maybe have a discussion, um, on the HR, if we want to look at, um, giving a verbal, um, support for, um, for their project at this meeting or in the next one or?
We're talking about the project that Jessica was talking about earlier?
Yeah.
The only thing that's time-sensitive for me at this point is just, um, certification from the city that what we're proposing is in the act of implementation of the city's comprehensive plan, which addresses the needs and priorities of that plan. And I know, like I said, I know it's an older plan and it's not specifically for students or specifically for seniors, but I think during that timeframe, things have changed, but the project for housing seniors, it's just not restricted to seniors.
Would you wanna maybe just draft a pledge of support letter for that? Would that make sense?
That would make sense for the next meeting, or not, yeah.
And then we can approve that when we see the letter and?
Are we ever gonna be looking at a comprehensive plan again? I mean, this one is going on almost.
Yeah, so I was looking, um, today at, uh, the Leagues Forum, kind of on who does that. A lot of them have been done by their regional development commission, so I reached out to West Central Initiative to see if they, um, do that. Um, so I haven't heard back yet, but, uh, kind of a step to see who does it and maybe get some proposals.
Yeah, but you have a good idea.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that makes sense. Kind of a, um, just one last question. What kind of, if everything kinda starts going the way you think it's gonna go, what are you thinking for timeframe, far as construction and all that good stuff, or?
Assuming, we won't know if we've, um, been awarded or approved for the funding till December.
December, okay.
And then, once that would happen, then we would have to work with Minnesota Housing to do the loan closing, so it's a pretty, that's like almost a year process.
Okay.
Looking at maybe, like, end of twenty twenty, late twenty twenty-six.
Okay.
It takes a year to process a loan?
It's hard.
So, yeah, so we get to that.
Unfortunately, it's, uh, well, no, I will say fortunately, it's Minnesota Housing has a very rigorous process to ensure all of the i's are dotted and all the t's are crossed to protect public dollars. And it's of, an incredibly rigorous process.
Interesting.
That's why they pay you the big bucks, Jessica. Alright, any other questions for, well, would there be any questions for our city manager offer newsletter? Hearing none. Uh, I'll just turn it back over to the council if there's any respective board updates. Of course, my boards are all forthcoming yet, so I have nothing really to report.
Not tourism this month. Park meets tomorrow night.
Alright. Hearing none, is there any?
Just, I have a question regarding the park board. Did they, did they ever put together what their ideas were for upcoming? I know like what their plan was to do, what they wanted to see improved or anything? Don't we usually do that?
Usually do that.
Didn't they usually provide, like, here's what we'd like to do this year, what we'd like to see them?
Well, I know we talked about on the
Tour.
Tour, about doing this year, doing the.
But was that their idea too? I mean, was that?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
The bathrooms were definitely, yeah, push. Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's a long time coming.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that is, absolutely. Okay.
Yeah, I don't think they've ever really put anything in writing or anything, presented it to us. I think it's just always been a kind of a verbal discussion.
Yeah, we've discussed it pretty, with the tennis courts to get the pickleball over there, the basketball courts, there's usually the playground equipment the year before when we've done the different stuff, so there's usually something that's passed on to, to recommendation to the council on what, what their main goals are. Or what needs, uh, the attention.
Well, yeah, and I think generally if there's something pressing, one of them will usually come to a meeting and kinda bring us up to speed too. They've been pretty good at communicating back and forth with us, I think, over the years, so. Alright, would there be any other business to come before the council? Hearing none.